And welcome to the January 2nd, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Tridifferent East Town School Board. We'll begin, as always, with a salute to the flag. Regular school board meetings are business meetings that are open to the public during which we provide several opportunities for public comment on items before the board. The first comment period is reserved for announced additional agenda items and items on the consent agenda only. Additional public comment will be heard for the actions listed under priority discussion. The final comment period near the end of the meeting is reserved for all other matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before the T E S D Board of Directors and which are not covered by the other comment periods. Each public comment period is reserved for residents and taxpayers. Additionally, the board will accept comments from sitting public officials for non-campaigning purposes and, by agreement with the T E A and T E N I G, the board will accept comments from the union presidents. All comments should be directed to the board as a whole or to the presiding officer. No comments or questions should be directed to individual board members. All public comments and responses should be in the spirit of civil public discourse. Also, please be aware that intentionally disrupting a lawful meeting or the administration of a government function is a criminal offense in Pennsylvania. The school board values the opportunity to hear from the community in person and appreciates your cooperation in advance. Next item on our agenda are reports from student representatives and other invited speakers. We have none this evening. We also don't have anything for the next item on the agenda, student and staff highlights. Next item on the agenda is announcement of additional items of which we have none. So now we have, we come to the part of the agenda which is public participation from district residents and district taxpayers regarding any items on the consent agenda only. If you wish, if you would like to make a comment on the consent agenda, please line up at the microphone. When you come to the microphone, state your name and township of residence. We will end comment with the last person in line. All public comment this evening will be limited to three minutes. Again, this comment period is limited to the consent agenda only. To help with the timing, please make your entire comment and then the board will determine an appropriate response. Do we have any comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to our next item, Board Action Regarding Amendment of Agenda to Include Additional Agenda Items from Section 5. As indicated before, we have none, so now we will move on to the consent agenda. Although Board Action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. With the consent of all members, they are therefore grouped and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, the board president will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. A board member may vote nay or abstain with respect to a consent agenda item without the need for removing the item from the consent agenda. The action under consideration is that the Board of School Directors approves the following recommendations on the consent agenda as printed on page five of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has a proper first and a second, so I will call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, eight zero. With that, we will turn, I will turn to Vice President T D, who will acknowledge our gifts this month.
Thank you. Every month, we are the happy recipients of many wonderful gifts, and this month is no exception. We have received two gifts, $400 cash donation from Rahul Mishra to the Tridifferent East Town School District, and field hockey goalie equipment donated anonymously to Valley Forge Middle School at a value of $1,000. And we thank our donors, anonymous and not, for their generosity and appreciate very much their kindness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. T D. Echo those thanks to our community for their generosity. Now we will turn to our priority discussion for this meeting, which is the 2025-26 Preliminary Budget Proposal. The action under consideration is that the Board of School Directors authorizes the administration to make the 2025-2026 Preliminary Budget Proposal available for inspection not later than January 7th, 2025. Authorize the administration to provide public notice not later than January 17th, 2025, that the board intends to adopt a preliminary budget at its regularly scheduled meeting on January 27th, 2025. Authorize the administration to take any and all actions necessary to ensure legal compliance with approval of the preliminary budget. And authorize the administration to publish notice of the intent to file for referendum exceptions with the Pennsylvania Department of Education at least one week prior to filing for such exceptions, and to file for such exceptions not later than February 27th, 2025, adopted this second day of January, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now that we have a first and a second, I will turn it to our business manager, Art McDonald, who will present on this item. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, President Kintorsik. It's a brief presentation tonight, but it does set us up for the meeting in January later this month on the 27th, where you'll see the preliminary budget. Tonight's meeting, we're going to be going through a summary of what is going to be displayed publicly prior to that meeting on the 27th, so we can comply with the state timeline for the 25-26 budget. We'll have an advertisement in the paper, then we'll have a paper copy available in the district office for anybody that wants to come in from the public and take a look at that preliminary budget. So we're going to be looking at summary information this evening, not detail, but the timeline we've seen that we've used the last couple of years has us showing the budget in January at two separate meetings. And then if you decide to stay with that preliminary budget and not approve a resolution to stay at or below the index, which you can do at this meeting this evening if you choose, and you can do it at the meeting on the 27th. If you do pass a resolution that says you want to stay at or below the index, we would transition to a more traditional budget timeline, which would have us evaluating a budget in April, and we wouldn't have to do anything in between, or approve a preliminary budget and then submit it to the state. So if you do not choose to pass that resolution to stay at or below the index, then we would file a preliminary budget with the state after its approval on January 27th, and that will allow us to meet the state timeline, which is a deadline in February. So we looked at this slide in Finance. It's changed a little bit. When we showed it to you in Finance, it included the contingency amount of 3 million. In this particular slide, it does not include that contingency amount. So the deficit, and you see in column B for 25-26, again, anticipated revenue, not treated by any additional tax revenue, and budgeted anticipated expenditures at 196 million and change, had results in a deficit of about 12.6 million. The Act One Index is at 4% for 25-26. It's been established by the state legislature, and that, applying that tax revenue on top of the deficit or the anticipated revenue, which is in column C, results in a deficit of about 6.7 million. The exceptions that we've talked about each year that we file for, we have completed the worksheets for those. The state has not opened those up yet because the A F R deadline just passed, so once the state populates those with information, we'll go out and verify those estimates that we've made. But based on our estimates, we think that'll contribute some additional monies there to the, to the revenue line, and that brings the deficit down to about 5.8 million with those two new revenue items added to the, the line, the column that's, or the line on line one that appears all the way across on this particular worksheet. So the, in addition to what you're going to be looking at on the 27th, if you don't pass a resolution tonight to stay at or below the index, would be authorizing the administration to file for exceptions and then see if we're eligible, and then you would then have a decision later on in the budget process to where you actually want to take those exceptions and what you want the index to be. I have a fun balance slide in here just so you can see what the balances are in the current year. This was discussed at Finance when we looked at the audit, so these are really the ending numbers of the 24-25 year, which become the beginning numbers of 25-26. So we're at 33.8 million currently. We talked about this at Finance also, the, in the budget development process, some of the drivers that are in the budget, both revenue and expense. The tax revenue and growth in the district currently isn't as aggressive as it has been, and we're actually experiencing quite a bit of residential and commercial appeal, so we only have about $93,000 in there of additional revenue, which includes growth. We do have a $6 million capital funds transfer. We've talked about that as being kind of the starting point of where we want to get in this process of transferring money to the capital fund. We'd kind of like to get to a number of 9 million, if that's possible. We've looked at the operating numbers that a new elementary school would look like years out from now, and we think that if we can get to a point of moving 9 million, we can then exchange that transfer in the general fund for the operating costs of the new elementary school. In addition, obviously, the more we put into the capital fund, less we'll have to borrow or issue in bonds, so we'll save some interest there. Again, one of the largest drivers in the budget that we've talked about for the last at least 15 years is the special ed budget, and that's not the largest we've seen as a budget increase at 1.1 million, but it is a significant number that we'll continue to look at when we go forward. Projected professional staffing additions, a significant number at 2.1 million. You can see in the parentheses what that relates to, STEM, middle school schedule, student supports, and program enrollments. We'll obviously get into all these things more in depth in the budget workshops and Finance meeting, meetings to come. First look healthcare projection, although flat in prescription, which is great, 8% in medical, dental 8%. Again, we'll get a second look March and April, and we'll bring that back to you and make adjustments where we see fit there and evaluate those a little more in detail. One of the changes that happened in between the last time we talked about the budget and Finance in this particular meeting is the P S E R's employer contribution rate came out. It was lower than what we anticipated that is in the budget. That adjustment is not currently in this budget. We will revise that when we bring it to you again. It's probably going to be, we think, around $275,000 impact to the total budget, so in the right direction going down in the expense column. So I mentioned earlier at the beginning, your options tonight for the, regarding the 25-26 budget. You can pass a resolution to display the budget the way we're presenting it this evening. Authorize us to file for Act One Exceptions, which meeting the state deadline to pass preliminary budget by February 19th. Reason we're doing it in January, because we don't have any voting meetings between the 27th and the 19th of February. That's why we're looking at it on the 27th. Option two would be to pass a resolution to stay at or below the Act One Index of 4%. We would not file for exceptions. We wouldn't have a state deadline to pass preliminary budget, and then we would just move to a final proposed, excuse me, proposed final budget in April, and then the final budget in June. This is a slide just for informational purposes explaining Act One, 2006, and then why there's referendum exceptions available to, to the board. Tax impact to resident and commercial in the T E School District at a 4% increase in taxes, projecting a revenue increase of about 5.8 million and 1.1335 mils. And then the special ed is the only exception that we're anticipating we're going to be eligible for, and that's because the P S E R's employer contribution rate has not significantly increased. It looks at the difference between two years. If the rate remains effectively the same, there really isn't a large enough number as a difference between the two to exceed the Act One Index, so we don't think we're going to be eligible there, but we do think we're about 950,000 of special education expenditure exception. And you can see the total tax rate with the two of those together is the 4.66. Historical slide to show you what we've done in the past since Act One that was passed in 2006, '07 fiscal year, and then on the side, you can see our average rate for the last five years is about 3.5%. And you can see the average increases in column F to taxpayers in the district. This slide we put in just to show you that when we talk about the general fund budget, which is the budget we're talking about this evening, really doesn't include all the expenses and what we spend here in the district. We also have a capital fund, so when we talk about entity-wide, district-wide, we're talking about general fund and capital fund together. So in column C, you can see the addition of the capital expenditures to the operating expenses of the general fund. And you can also, if you follow across the column, when you look at the total expenses compared to total revenue, which is in column A, total revenue minus D, total expenses, you can see that in pretty much virtually every year since 2006, we've had entity-wide deficit. And if you look at the bottom, you can see the total of that entity-wide deficit of about 130 million. Obviously, we're not 130 million in the hole. We've replaced that deficit with what we've issued in bonds, and that's helped the district be able to do capital projects without, you know, exceeding our debt limit. We're well under that at 130, and our debt limit is in excess of very close to 300 million at this point, which we have not even gotten close to. Key dates for the budget development process in addition to tonight. We'll put the public notice in the paper on the 17th, and unless you pass a resolution to stay at or below the index, we will display the budget in the office, as I mentioned before. On the 27th, we'll vote on the preliminary budget, and the deadline to publish notice of intent to file for exceptions that I mentioned earlier is February 27th. We have two in-depth budget workshops, one in March, one in April, and then the proposed final budget at the April Board Meeting on the 28th, and a final budget on June 9th. So in addition to these meetings, we have our Finance Committee meetings, which I'm not putting on this particular slide, but we do get into in-depth conversations about the budget at those meetings as well, and of course, other committee meetings where there's budget impact, you'll, you'll have discussions about that also. That's the extent of my slides this evening. Certainly welcome your questions.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Sure.
For that presentation, I will now turn to the board. See if the board has any questions or comments at this time for, for Mr. McDonald. Okay. Seeing none, the board now invites members of the audience to comment on this item. If you have comments or questions, please step to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing none, I will turn back to the board. Are there any further comments from the board? Yes, Dr. Hatinski.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment that I'm in support of filing for the exceptions because we're early in the process here, and as Mr. McDonald showed, we still have a significant gap, and we want to keep making our capital contributions to make sure we fund our capital plan and are able to, to operate the, the new school and meet all of our commitments. So I think we have some work to do, and I think filing for the exceptions now gives us some flexibility to work on the budget. Hopefully, that gap shrinks because we can't have a, you know, still can't have a 5.67 million dollar gap, so we, we have work to do. But just wanted to, yeah, put that out there, that I'm supportive of it, and as the Finance Chair, we'll keep working on it throughout the next few months until June.
Thank you, Dr. Hatinski. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I will just reiterate that we are early on in the process and encourage the public to stay engaged on this topic, which we'll be discussing at multiple Finance Meetings and Board Meetings in the months to come until our deadline to pass the budget in the beginning of June. So with that, I will now turn to the board for a vote. Do we need to do a roll call vote on this?
If you'd like.
Okay. We, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. I'll start with Ms. Wile.
Yes.
Ms. Audrain.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Picioni.
Yes.
Dr. Hatinski.
Yes.
Didn't mean to skip you, sorry. Vice President T D.
Yes.
President Kintorsik.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda will be Committee and Ambassador Reports. First up on the list is our Policy Committee and report from Ms. Susan Audrain.
Thank you, President Kintorsik. The Policy Committee did not meet in December. Our next meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on January 7th, 2025, in the T E A O Office Room 200. So you're all welcome to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Audrain. Next is our Diversity Committee Report. The, our liaison to the Diversity Committee, Dr. Robert Singh, was unable to join us this evening, so we've asked Ms. Maryam Picioni to provide the report.
Thank you. The Diversity Committee met on Wednesday, December 3rd. The topic was Building Belonging, Reflecting on Progress, and Moving Forward Together. Student contributions included the Conestoga High School students, who serve on the Diversity Committee, have been members since 7th grade and are now in 10th and 12th grades. They shared their involvement in student-led initiatives promoting diversity, inclusion, and belonging by describing how their training equipped them with skills to recognize and address challenges others face, ensuring they can support peers when injustices occur. They highlighted the impact of their programs in a robust discussion during which one student emphasized, quote, "Even if one student experiences an injustice at school, it is one too many. It is the responsibility of all students to ensure a safe and inclusive school environment," unquote. The family engagement included a discussion on how families from underrepresented populations have been engaged through programs designed to remove barriers to participation. The Family and Community Partnership Group has facilitated access by addressing obstacles such as childcare, dinner, and language support. Parents shared their experiences with a translator who was present to provide support for families speaking in their home language. One family with four children who graduated from the district noted a significant improvement in their ability to navigate the school system, access supports, and engage with staff over the years. They credited these changes to targeted efforts to foster understanding of the district's processes and support systems. The attending parents encouraged others to actively participate in school events that celebrate diverse cultures, languages, and traditions. Celebrating diversity and communications program included a suggestion from the Family and Community Partnership Group focused on expanding opportunities to celebrate diversity while improving communication with families in their home languages, by emphasizing the importance of ensuring families can receive information, ask questions, and share barriers in their preferred languages. The Hillside Elementary School Principal highlighted the success of the recent School Culture Night at Hillside as an example. Families and students shared their unique cultural backgrounds, traditions, and histories with a multilingual information table organized by the Family and Community Partnership Group. And moving forward, the district is committed to increasing similar opportunities at parent and family events to foster inclusion and belonging across the school community. Our next Diversity Committee meeting will be held in February. Watch the calendar for that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Picioni. Next, we will have a report from the Finance Committee and our Chair, Dr. Roberta Hatinski.
Thank you, President Kintorsik. We met on Monday, December 9th, and started out the meeting looking backwards at last year. We had our year-end financial report summary and analysis, so we started off talking about the general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for 23-24. We review those variances every year, and we'll see more in the, in the budget workshop for a historical look, but last year, revenue was higher than budget due to property tax, which is about 600,000 higher, delinquent tax collection about $300,000 higher, and interest income, which was the biggest contributor at almost $3 million over budget. State revenues ended this fiscal year higher by about $1.2 million, largely due to increases, increases in basic and special education funding, and interim billing, transfer tax, and federal revenue were lower than budgeted for 23-24. Transfer tax was the largest negative variance and was about $1 million below budget. Expenditures were under budget for the year. We had favorable, favorable outcome in our healthcare expenses, which helped us out by about $2 million. Overall, general fund expenses were under budget, but instruction and supporting services were over budget, as well as contracted services and athletics. And bond principal and interest was also lower than budgeted because we had anticipated, when we, when we built the budget a year ahead of time, that we would be borrowing within the last school year, and we managed to push those, those payments off a bit. So after reviewing the year's findings, we looked at the fund balance. Our fund balance is 30, was at the end of the year, was $33,841,973, an increase of So Moody's, our ratings agency, likes to see that we're keeping our, our fund balance stable, and even having an increase, that's, that's a good sign. And $33 million is, is healthy and at a, a level that is not, is in line with what Moody's expectations are with a budget, our overall budget being around $180 million every year. The overall budget outcome also allowed us to make the $5 million capital contribution that we were planning, so that was some good news. Looking ahead to, not looking ahead yet, still on last year, we had our annual comprehensive and local audit reports from our auditors. Carl Hogan from Withem Smith &amp; Brown was with us, and so our previous auditing firm has been acquired by Withem Smith, and they still managed to get the, the audit done, and as well as our annual comprehensive financial report. Mr. Hogan added that only 12 districts have received the Certificate of Excellence Award that we received last year after submitting our first annual comprehensive report, financial report. So that was good news, and we're going to be submitting this year's ACTFAR as well. The, Mr. Hogan reported that the audit had an unmodified or clean opinion, and he also reviewed the management discussion and analysis, and analysis, and explained that many other school districts are facing the same financial issues that we are, but that our strong fund balance bodes well for our future financial concerns. Just to look at some of the, the outcomes, the summary of the auditor's results, as I said, they expressed an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses related to the audit of the financial statements or on internal controls. No instances of noncompliance material to the financial statements would be required, that would be required. No instances of noncompliance material to the financial statements that would be required to be reported in accordance with government auditing standards. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over major federal award programs. And they also had an unmodified opinion for the major federal award programs that were tested. So that was good news on the audit front, and I would recommend to anyone who's interested in the district finances to look at the annual comprehensive financial report that's included, starting on page 137. In addition to the audit materials, there's also 10 years of financial information for anybody who wants to look at our spending or revenues over that time. There's also a district profile that provides a lot of general facts and figures that are, I think, very useful for understanding how the district works. Moving forward, we are going to be looking at the '25, '26 budget development for the rest of the school year, and the rest of the discussion was about our preliminary budget, which has been just discussed here in the priority discussion, so I don't need to summarize that. Our next meeting is on Monday, January 13 for finance, and we have another one on February 10, then the two budget workshops in March and April, another finance meeting in May, and one in June. So the public is invited and welcome to attend all of those and to help us participate in this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hattenski. Next, we will get a report on the facilities committee. As mentioned before, Dr. Robert Singh was unable to attend tonight, so we'll ask Mr. Ken Hong to provide the facilities update.
Thank you, President Kantorsik. The facilities committee met on December 10, 2024. There were four items on the agenda. First, the construction infrastructure projects for the summer of 2025. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning renovations and upgrades for Beaumont, New Eagle Elementary Schools, TE Middle School, and Conestoga High School are on track to start June 19, 2025, and projected to finish by August 21, 2025. In addition to that, interior and exterior renovations and upgrades for Beaumont, Devon, Hillside Elementary, and New Eagle Elementary School, along with TE Middle School and Conestoga High School, are also on track with projected start dates of June 19 and finish dates of August 21, 2025. Second, athletic fields project update. The site itself, general trades contractors, electrical trades, and athletic surfaces and equipment vendor contractors have notices to proceed with projected substantial completion dates of mid-August 2025. The buildings, general contracting, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing contractors also have notices to proceed with their projected substantial completion dates at the end of October 2025. Currently, there are no issues on lead times from prime contractors. The existing PICO poles are scheduled for relocation at the beginning of this month. The trench drain for the Lower North parking lot was installed, and new utility locations are being coordinated with PICO. The prime contract's budget is $21,178,202. Change orders were discussed. There were requests for changes for the installation of scoreboards, C logos for turf field one, and softball tick marks for turf field two. After committee deliberation, cost analysis from the options presented before us, the committee decided only to move forward with a change order supporting the softball tick marks on turf field two. More cost-containing options for the scoreboards and the C logos will be presented at future meetings. Third, new elementary school updates. The interior demolition has begun. Contractors have cleared out the remaining furniture. Construction documents, design development, are being coordinated with our engineers. The fourth agenda item, the athletics field project, was updated on the capital sources and uses report. We also discussed how that report is generated. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 14, at the TE administrative offices at 7:00 PM. All are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Next, we'll have a report on the education committee from Vice President Tedi.
Thank you, President Kantorsik. The education committee did not meet in December, but we will be meeting next Thursday, January 9, at 7:00 PM at the administrative offices on West Valley Road, and all are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tedi. Next, we'll turn to ad hoc legislative committee and Ms. Maryam Pichioni.
Thank you. I have no report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Pichioni. Now we will turn to the ad hoc public information committee and its Chair, Dr. Yolanda Allen.
The, thank you, President Kantorsik. The ad hoc public information committee did not meet in December. However, we will be meeting on January 23, 2025, at the TE administrative offices. And during this meeting, we will continue our discussion around the naming of our new elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. And lastly, we'll get a report on the intermediate unit technical school from our liaison, Ms. Maryam Pichioni.
Thank you. The intermediate unit did not meet in December. The next meeting is January 15 at the Brandywine Campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pichioni. Next item on the agenda is other actions under consideration. We have none this evening. So now we turn to public participation from residents, district residents, and district taxpayers regarding non-agenda matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. Residents and taxpayers may address the board on matters not included the agenda. If you have a comment, please step up to the microphone. And I'll remind folks, please state your name, township of residence, and comments are limited to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kate Catherine Mayer. I'm a resident at 2430 White Horse Road in Berwind. I have five children in the district, two of whom attend district schools, three of whom attend private schools. I want to thank you all for your service to our community, and I want to thank Ms. Weil, Mr. Hong, and Dr. Allen for your new presence. I haven't been here in about four or five years, but I am quite concerned about the very abrupt and quick presentation of the matter this evening, including the finance committee presentation. I am a really committed member of the community, having served over 250 students as a literacy specialist and advocate in the school district. And when I hear the presentations this evening, I do not hear speak any communication about the students. And I hear a lot of information about increase in taxes and all of these things that my husband would probably be very, much better able to articulate in terms of the finance side that, you know, we hear often. But what I don't hear is any reasons for increases that have to do with the students in the district. And what I know as a parent, and as an educator, and as a specialist who serves our community is that there are many things happening within the district that are not being presented to our community, and there are things that are increasing spending and cost that are being pushed aside. So as you consider your abrupt attempt to not just kind of go with the amount of, again, I'm not a finance specialist, but what I hear is, we're going to keep rolling and going with what we've done forever, and we are a very privileged community. The balance, the fund balance we have is extreme compared to those in which I, the other communities in which I participate in with my clients. I want you to think about the students who are not up here, who are not serving you as a board, us as a community, in being those kids who we can talk about and present publicly as the success. Because you have a large contingency of students who are smart, able, and not able to effectively participate in our school district without supports. And it sounds like, from what I see from the finance presentation, that those students are being attributed to some of these expenses that are requiring us to increase taxes. So I just want you to think about that. And I also want you to think about the fact that this presentation is the same as it was five years ago, and just noodle on that. And I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Ruse. It's good to see you again.
Thank you for your comment. I will, we will take that under advisement as we do all of our public comments. I will reiterate that for purposes of tonight, again, this is the start of a budget process that extends through June, where we have extensive discussions at many meetings, including our finance committee meetings, budget workshops, and full board monthly meetings. And I do think that we've done a pretty good job over the past few years of detailing what it is that is driving our expenses, but, and working with the public to be able to answer questions about those and provide information about what it is that is making up our budget on both ends, on the expense side and on the revenue side. But that doesn't mean we can't do a better job at times about things, and, you know, we can always improve on how we explain things. And so I encourage folks to attend all of these meetings, provide additional suggestions. We probably have a little more flexibility during our finance committee meetings to do that, so encourage you to attend those as well. So, thank you. Do we have any other public comments this evening?
Cindy Fergoldy-Tredifern. I have just a question on the facilities report. You were mentioning schools are going to have air, and I heard TE Middle. Is that accurate?
I'm sorry, what did you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. The mic is a little bit.
Yeah, the mics may all shrink. Cindy Fergoldy-Tredifern. I have a question on facilities. Is it TE Middle that's getting air?
So I will let, I mean, why not, I'll turn to Mr. McDonald for that.
I didn't hear what you said specifically, but I assume you said HVAC work, right? So yeah, repairs and the like, rooftop units and those kinds of things.
But it's not actually the air, like air conditioning?
Well, some of them, some of them are what we call conditioned air, yes.
But it's not a total.
And there are some units that are air-conditioned, or some areas of the school that are air-conditioned.
Yeah, I realize that, but not the classrooms. So it's not that.
Yeah, those are conditioned air. But some of it is, that would still be related to HVAC work that's being done in the building, though even those conditioned air spaces.
Okay. I'll keep campaigning. And thank you, you told me in one of the other meetings, the least the auditorium's getting new seating. I will really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fergoldy. Do we have any other comments from the public? Seeing none, the public comment periods for this evening are now closed. This is the point in our meeting when we make any announcements required by the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Our solicitor this evening is Ken Ruse, and he will make any required announcements.
Yes, the board did meet in executive session on December 2, 2024, after the board meeting regarding collective bargaining, and it met again tonight before this meeting at 6:00 PM to discuss threat and litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Future meetings, Monday, January 27, 2025, regular board meeting, 7:30 PM here at Conestoga High School. Next meeting, Monday, February 24, 2025, regular board meeting, 7:30 PM, again here at Conestoga High School. And Monday, March 10, 2025, our first budget workshop, 7:30 PM, once again here at Conestoga High School. And I'll turn to the board and see if we have any general announcements. Seeing none, I will direct everybody to any correspondence that the board has received on page 280 of the agenda. Last call for announcements from board members. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moot.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you can stay here. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Welcome.